Order and would ask that everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, City Manager, for pulling this special meeting together. Let the record show that all City Council members are here this evening, and I'll turn it over to the City Manager.
Yes, good evening, Your Honor, and members of the council. This is a special City Council meeting to discuss the city's capital improvement plan. By means of background, the city maintains a two-year budget cycle. The existing budget was approved in June of 2024, and that covers fiscal year '24 through '25, as well as fiscal year '25 through '26. The purpose of tonight's work session is to solicit feedback from the council on a proposed amendment to the existing CIP. This would reinstate projects that we were unable to reapproved in the existing CIP, and also to add some new projects, specifically playground equipment replacement on four of our parks, as well as replacement of two fire stations. City staff will incorporate council's feedback into the draft plan, and we will present that to the Planning Commission for conformance with the city's general plan. And then later this year, the council can review a final draft, time permitting, of course. I should also point out that next spring, the council will be embarking on the development of a new capital improvement plan, and staff will recommend development of a five-year capital improvement plan, which is consistent with best practices. That would be the venue and forum for the council to discuss all the other capital improvement projects that we are currently working on, as well as contemplating. Finally, before I turn it over to city staff, I'd like to point out that due to conflicts of interest, tonight's presentation will be broken into three segments. The first segment is the introductory session, while the second and third sessions are for projects in which council members may have conflicts of interest. My apologies to the council and the public if tonight's presentation appears disjointed or confusing. Before we pass it over to our city engineer, I'm going to ask our city attorney to provide some brief background on the reasons behind the conflicts of interest and, well, the recusal process. Counselor?
Thank you, City Manager Benoon. I think you covered a good chunk of that, but under the Political Reform Act, there are certain prohibitions that exist under circumstances involving real property interests. This evening, there are a couple of items where those interests appear to exist, and therefore, we have separated tonight's agenda up into three items, and the council members that are involved in the items involving conflict of interest will be recusing themselves from two of the items.
Given that the presentation might appear a little bit disjointed, I thought it was appropriate to have the attorney provide some brief background. With that in mind, we'll go ahead and pass it over to our city engineer, Mr. Mickey Saboda.
Good evening, Honored Vice Mayor, council members, and city staff and the public. My name is Mickey Saboda. I'm a city engineer. We are extremely excited about the upcoming five-year CIP that we're going to kick off starting next year, but in the meantime, we are still very excited to be here tonight to do this workshop and talk about proposed amendments to the current 2024-2026 CIP. Given that this is a workshop format, there is no formal action we are asking for, but we certainly welcome council feedback. And feel free to jump in and ask questions or provide comments or feedback at any time. This first presentation, this slide shows the five items I'm going to cover as part of the first presentation. I understand that there may be new council members or council members or staff that may not be familiar with the capital improvement plan process. So the first bullet I'm going to cover is what that process looks like typically. I'm also going to cover how we came to the current 2024-2026 CIP. The exciting part of the presentation is the third bullet. We'll talk about a summary of the projects and proposed amendments to the CIP. Then we're going to talk about, I'll give you a sneak peek of the upcoming five-year CIP, and then we'll conclude with talking about next steps. So first, what is a capital improvement plan? So like the first bullet, a capital improvement plan is a long-range planning and budgeting tool used to identify, prioritize, and fund major public infrastructure and facility projects. A CIP is a very common document and program that's used by many counties and cities. Here in Newark, it is approved biannually with the budget. So here it is. It's the budget and the CIP. It's about a 300-page document. The CIP represents about 100 pages of this document. The CIP does help maintain and improve physical assets of the city by identifying prioritized infrastructure and capital projects that are needed for the build-out of the city. It helps align investments and community goals. These goals are typically identified and clarified in the city's general plan, very specific plans, and master planning documents. We'll cover two of those master planning documents later in the presentation today. It helps ensure financial responsible planning and transparency by clearly identifying anticipated project costs, as well as funding sources over the life of the CIP. And like I mentioned, it is updated every two years with a biennial budget. So what projects are typically covered in a CIP? I've got some photos up here. Starting on the left, CIP can typically cover major renovation projects at our facilities. The photo on the left is the Siliman Family Aquatic Center. We have several large-scale projects going on in that in the coming years. CIPs can typically include road maintenance and preservation projects. You'll hear me talk a lot about slurry seal or asphalt overlays on our streets, but this also includes replacement of concrete, curb and gutter, sidewalks, things of that nature. Those are typically in a CIP. The third image on the right, CIP can include wholesale renovation or reconstruction of buildings and facilities. This image or this photo in particular is Fire Station 27 located at the corner of Maury and Cherry, and we'll actually be talking about this later in the presentation today. And a CIP can also include things like park, playground replacement, or rehabilitation. In addition to these typical things that are covered or projects covered in the CIP, our CIP also covers things like equipment replacement, large-scale equipment replacement, new vehicles, and even master planning efforts. So zoning updates, general plan updates, those are actually covered as a CIP project. So how are projects selected? The image on the right provides more detailed information. It's actually taken out of our budget and CIP document, but we look at guidance from the general plan and strategic planning studies. Oftentimes, for example, the general plan does include policies, goals, and specific action plans that provide guidance and can actually identify specific projects that are needed here in the city for the build-out. We get feedback from city council staff, including in sessions like this where we get workshops and we'll solicit feedback from city council. CIP process also includes evaluation of funding and resources. Obviously, we want to make sure we've got money to pay for projects, and we've got staffing to execute those projects. And prioritization of projects is important as we look at legal, regulatory, and safety needs. Obviously, those that have the highest legal, regulatory, and safety impacts are prioritized above other projects that are wanted but not necessarily needed. Ultimately, the CIP is presented and approved by city council. So how are projects typically funded? So we have a variety of funding sources to pay for projects. In general, they are in two different categories. There are restricted fundings, which means that the money can only be used for certain types of projects, or in more detail, on specific projects themselves. And then we also have unrestricted funding, where the money can be used on any project. So starting at the top, gas tax funds is a restricted funding source. These are used for street maintenance projects, so the street slurry, the grind and overlay, the new sidewalk, curb and gutter, striping, those types of projects are paid for by gas tax funds. We have capital funds. These are unrestricted funds. These are typically from surplus general fund revenue and another surplus revenue sources. Community development maintenance funds are restricted funding that can be used for planning activities, so general plan updates, zoning updates, specific plan preparation, master plan preparation, those kinds of documents. Development impact fees are restricted funding. These are fees paid by developers when they come pull building permits. They often pay impact fees. We have a variety of different types of impact fees, and those are restricted funding to be used for improvements that are needed for the benefit that new development puts onto the city resources. Park impact fees is actually a type of development impact fee. It is a restricted fund. It can be used for various park improvement projects, and we'll cover those later tonight as well. And of course, we have various federal, state, regional, and local grants. Those can be restricted or unrestricted. We do go after, and you'll hear a lot about, funds that are tied to transportation and street improvement projects that rely on these types of funding.
Mickey, just a quick question on that last slide. For those that are watching from home, can you give just a rough estimate on the annual funds that each one of these accounts may have at any given time?
Absolutely. So gas tax funds is, again, a broad group of gas tax, including sales tax revenue that we get for street projects. They range between $4 to $4.5 million we get every year, and you'll notice that every year, we execute projects that are related to slurry seal, grind, and overlay, those types of projects. Capital funds, again, those are wholly dependent on the state of the general fund here at the city. Impact fees, park impact fees, development impact fees, those are wholly dependent on construction and development activity. Park impact fees, as an example, over the past several years, the revenue from them ranges, it can range from a few hundred thousand to a few million dollars. And again, that wholly depends on development activity and who's pulling building permits. And then, of course, state, regional, and local grants, that varies highly, it highly depends on the type of grant. Most of these are one-time grants, so it varies year to year.
And oftentimes, the grants come with specific time periods that the funds need to be used by, would that be correct?
That is correct. We have several transportation-related grants and funding sources that require us, as an example, to start construction over the next couple of years. And you'll hear about those projects later on today.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so now I talked about CIP in general. Now I'm going to cover the background on how we came to the current 2024-2026 CIP. So January of last year, a presentation was made to council of the overview of the CIP process, similar to what I'm doing today. After January and before the formal presentation and approval of the council, a couple of things happened. The first is we had two absences from city council, so it went from five down to three. Of the remaining three, we had a couple conflicts of interest, so they had to recuse themselves, so we couldn't have a quorum to vote on some projects. Obviously, you need three votes to vote on projects. And there was also a general understanding among staff and council that we were in the midst of preparing and completing a couple master planning studies. The Parks Master Plan Update and the city's first facilities master plan. So understanding that we had these master planning updates coming later in 2024, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion or decision about selecting new parks or facilities projects. So as a result, when the CIP was presented to council in June of '24, it was approved, the budget was approved, but it only included a partial list of projects. October, the facilities master plan was approved by city council. November, the Parks Master Plan Update was approved by city council. And we're here today in 2025 to do a couple things. What we're here to do is to bring back those projects that council did not vote on because of recusal or not having a quorum, to present high priority, only those high priority projects from the Parks Master Plan and the Facilities Master Plan that we think we can get done in the next or in this current fiscal year. So I keep mentioning that we are in the midst of, we're very excited about the upcoming five-year CIP that's going to be effective July of next year. Between now and July, in this six-to-eight-month period, we felt that there are some critical, really important projects we want to come to council and get your approval on to get those projects started right away.
And as you mentioned, these are projects that the city council previously approved?
There are a group of projects--
Or the council had seen.
Correct.
Yes.
That is correct. So the Facilities Master Plan presentation and the Parks Master Plan presentation in late 2024 included the list of these projects. Since over the past couple of years, there has been a lot of work here in the city. We've had a lot of street and traffic projects completed, so we had over six lane miles of slurry seal completed. If you go around town right now, we're in the midst of doing a lot of pavement, grinding and overlay, patch pavement work. That's in anticipation of a major slurry seal project we're going to do next spring. So if you see us, our crews out there, you know, with all these rectangular and square patches of asphalt, that's what it's for. We've included bike safety lanes on Cherry Street and Newark Boulevard. We've completed the design of the traffic signal interconnect project for engineers like us who like to really get involved in geeking out about traffic signals. So traffic signals in an intersection can typically, you know, have a time system where they can, you know, change the red timer, the green timer, depending on traffic. But right now, if you have two signals, right now, our signals don't talk to each other. So if you have two signalized intersections that are close together, you want them to be able to talk to each other to really improve traffic flow, especially along major arterial roadways. So what this project is designed to do is to design it so that our traffic signals along major arterials can actually talk to each other and coordinate their timing to better improve traffic flow. On sidewalks, on the concrete side, we've placed over 2,000 linear feet of curb gutter and sidewalk. Again, we're in the midst of our next cycle of concrete repair projects. You may see our crews or our contractor out there tearing out damaged curb, gutter. We have several pedestrian ramps and handicap ramps we're in the midst of replacing right now. We hope to get a bunch of that done by the end of this year.
Mickey, on these sidewalks, a number of us do steps of walking around-- --on our community, are you getting calls from residents regarding specific sidewalks? How's the information coming to you that this section of a sidewalk should be considered to be replaced?
People can call in and provide their concerns in a variety of ways. Sometimes they'll call our maintenance, sometimes they'll call us in engineering, but ultimately, it finds its way over to engineering, and then our folks include that on a tally list of upcoming repair projects. So we do keep a long tally list of projects. In addition, so here's an example. So if we anticipate that we're going to be doing a major pavement overlay project on a certain section of street, we'll make sure that we repair and replace all the concrete along that as well, because we need a good concrete boundary to build that street.
Mr. Benoon, I would ask, as we continue to get information out to our residents regarding opportunities to provide us with information, maybe in one of our next quarter letters, we can put information regarding, if you, as a citizen, observe a sidewalk that's uplifting or hazardous in any respect, to let us know, and here's the process for doing that. I think that'd be helpful.
And thank you, Your Honor. Feedback's well taken. I did have a brief conversation with our new communications and public engagement manager. She'll be working with our engineering team to make sure that we get information out to the public, both in terms of our approach to streets and sidewalks and maintenance, as well as soliciting information from the public.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. And then finally, the final bullet point. Police department have been able to complete several CIP projects related to purchasing vehicle pursuit intervention devices, emergency breaching tools, and firearms training systems. These are copies of the master plan update for the park, as well as the city's first-ever facilities master plan. Both of these are long-term planning documents, similar to the general plan, that help guide the city in identifying and prioritizing needed projects for the city. The effort to prepare both these documents, it was multi-year. They both include a detailed assessment of physical assets, so like parks, playgrounds, buildings, facilities. But in addition to that, it also included programming analysis, so how parks are used, you know, who uses parks, what are the needs of that park in the future, in addition to buildings and space and offices, things of that nature. So the detailed physical, as well as programming assessment. The effort to complete both of these studies also included extensive community outreach. There were multiple workshops, there were pop-up events, community surveys, digital surveys, interviews, and the feedback that we got from the community did help guide and steer a lot of the recommended projects in both of these documents. Both of these documents ultimately resulted in preparing a prioritized list of projects, and there are hundreds, there are over 100 projects combined in both of these documents prioritized, top to bottom. We will be reviewing and incorporating all of these projects as part of the five-year CIP, so we're very excited about that. The purpose of tonight is to focus on a couple key, high-priority life safety projects that, again, we think we want to execute or expedite right away. The Parks Master Plan. So the city maintains 14 parks covering over 130 acres. We have neighborhood parks labeled in blue. We have larger community parks labeled in red, and we have a couple specialty parks which are labeled in green. The Parks Master Plan goal on this slide, to protect and support the existing network, to accommodate demand and service, enhance community identity, and to foster connectivity. These are all taken straight from our general plan. The Parks Master Plan priorities, oh, I have to back up. One of the interesting feedback we got from the Parks Master Plan update compared to the previous update that was done in 2017 was a greater focus and a greater desire for the city to focus on our existing parks, our existing facilities, as opposed to seeking out new parks or lands for new facilities. So you notice that the Parks Master Plan priorities are really focused on our existing parks, existing children's play areas, restrooms at our existing parks, maintenance and playfields at our existing parks, and trails and pathways at our existing parks. Likewise, our facilities master plan, if you look at the facility master plan goals, the assessing facility needs and conditions, determining growth and future needs, engaging the community, developing recommendations, and coming up with an action plan, these also come straight from the general plan, goals, policies, and actions specifically related to ensuring that the city maintains our existing facilities and looks forward and properly plans for the future need, the build-out of the city. The Parks Master Plan categories are listed up there, where we broke up the various projects in the preventive maintenance, renovations, replacement, or self-repurpose and demolish. And these are for the city's 24 different buildings and facilities. Now we get to the exciting part of this particular presentation, but before I begin, again, I want to emphasize the purpose of tonight's presentation. The proposed projects that we're presenting are, first, they are going to be projects that we didn't have a quorum, the council did not vote on last year because they didn't have a quorum. They're high priority that we want to get done in this current fiscal year. And the second thing, our new parks and facilities projects, straight out of these master plans, that, again, we want to see if you can expedite that now before the end of this fiscal year. We don't want to wait until July of next year. Any other projects, there are other high priority projects that are identified in the various master plans. We will be bringing those back to city council, again, as part of the five-year CIP. So first, proposed parks projects. Ooh, let's see. So we have four park projects that are prioritized in the master plan. We're showing three of them right now. The fourth will be the last presentation this afternoon. These are high priority park projects. They are for the upgrading and replacing the playgrounds at Birch Grove, Jerry Raver Ash Street, and Miraboo Park. Combined, they total approximately $3.7 million. Our proposal is to utilize park impact fees, which currently has a balance of around $10 million. So we've got about $6 million left. We'll take some money out of the $6 million as part of the fourth project that I'll talk about later this afternoon. The genesis or the basis of why we want to do these three or four, three or four particular parks is that they ranked extremely high on the priority list. There was a safety inspection and audit conducted, and it labeled that these parks are, the equipment on these parks really need to be replaced. And we feel, staff feels, that we are able, that we'll be able to execute these projects, actually get them constructed before July 1 of next year.
Quick question on that, Mickey. If I may, just again for our listening audience, can you briefly describe the safety and audit inspections that occurred? Who did those? What were some of the issues that they discovered when they did the inspections?
Sure. So as part of the Parks Master Plan, they hired a subconsultant to do a safety audit of, I believe, all our park facilities. They did come up with a long list of items for consideration. Some are maintenance items that we could take care of, but they did identify certain things, not only safety things, but code compliance and other issues that came up. One of the interesting things that came up, and this is a direct result of the survey, as well as the inspections, is the need for an all-abilities play facility, but we'll talk about that as part of my later presentation.
And these three parks, and we'll get to the fourth park, are Priority One projects. Again, for our listening audience at home, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're not going to do some park improvements at the other parks, but these are the ones that are listed as Priority One.
That is correct. And in fact, the Parks Master Plan does include other improvements that are not even included on here. So Birch Grove, Jerry Raver, and Miraboo, there are other projects on those parks that we're not even including on here. We're really focused on the highest priority safety projects.
Thank you.
Onto proposed facility projects. Similar to the Parks Project, there was a prioritized list. Again, and I also want to remind everyone that we will include all projects as part of the five-year, or we'll look into all projects as part of the upcoming five-year CIP. The two projects that we want to talk about in particular are Fire Stations Number 27, and that's a picture on the lower right on the corner of Cherry and Maury Avenue, and Fire Station Number 29 on Russian Drive at Newark Boulevard. The Parks, or, excuse me, the Facilities Master Plan Update identified these as among the highest priority projects that need to be immediately addressed. Both of these fire stations, they are operated by the Fire District, but the city owns and maintains them. But the assessment did identify several operational challenges with these buildings. They are outdated, they are lacking in security fencing, there are several code compliance issues within building code, ADA, access ingress, drainage issues, or phone issues. And the biggest thing are life safety issues with these two particular fire stations. Neither one of them have adequate backup generators, and both of them need significant seismic upgrades to get them up to code. And that, those last two things are what stand, what have these two projects stand apart from the rest, including the community center and other high priority projects. So that's why we're focusing on these two projects in particular. The ask, or the proposed ask is for $3.5 million just for the preliminary planning effort to get these projects started in terms of site assessment, soils assessment, underground assessment, environmental assessments. The total length from start to completion is estimated to be four to five years. The reason it's four to five years is because we have a lot of unknowns right now. We don't know what the soil's condition is, we don't know if there's any contamination. What makes these projects particularly challenging is that we have to find interim facilities to house the crews and their equipment while these facilities are being demolished and reconstructed. So the interim facilities are projects unto themselves. So given this huge range of uncertainty, that's why we are estimating four to five years. Obviously, through the preliminary planning stage, if we can eliminate some of these uncertainties, and if we can reduce the total length to get these projects constructed, we'll certainly do that.
And real credit to you, Mr. Benoon, and staff for looking at opportunities to expedite these projects and look at some cost savings opportunities, because, as the public mayor may not know, the Castor Valley is currently building a fire station in their community, and we have looked at the design for their fire station up in Castor Valley and believe that there's an opportunity for us to mirror some of the design work that they've done up there, if I understand that correctly.
Yes, we are collaborating with the Alameda County Fire Department. They've already gone down this process. They're doing it in a couple phases, and to the extent we can continue to collaborate with them and capitalize on some efficiencies, we'll certainly do so.
And why that's important, of course, is our outstanding Alameda County Fire Department not only provides service to Castor Valley, but they also do to Newark as well. So there's certainly every reason to try to build a fire station that is one that's [inaudible]. been reviewed, the fire personnel are on board with the design. So I think not only do we save on time, but we save on money. So congratulations on that effort.
And I do want to note that we did reach out to MAC5, which is a consultant working for the Alameda County Fire District on those other projects. So they are in the midst of constructing three new fire stations. We've engaged with MAC5, they've helped us analyze these two particular fire stations. We'll certainly be looking at them to provide guidance on these particular stations. I've also contacted the Fire District to make sure that we understand what lessons are they learning as part of their three stations currently slated for construction, so we don't repeat it here in Newark.
I have a question. Sorry, the, so, thank you. These projects are super, are very important. The public safety, the seismic upgrading, the power backup, very important. I am concerned that there's a lot on the plate of Public Works Department, and some projects that have been really been dragging on for a long time. So I'm concerned, I just, I'm concerned, I guess I want an assurance that, that in moving these projects forward, we're not going to be leaving any other projects behind. We can, we can, we can work to deliver the Central Avenue Overcrossing and other projects that are sort of in the works.
That is a fair concern. There are many other projects that are ongoing. Central Avenue in particular, we're finalizing the 90% design, we're reassessing and reevaluing the overall project cost. That project, along with all the other hundreds of projects, we are evaluating and excited to incorporate in the upcoming five-year CIP.
And I absolutely agree with Councilmember Grindal in that respect, and I think that's where the conversation, Mr. Benoon, next spring regarding the CIP, when we look at the 100-plus projects, we, the council, need to make, and we'll certainly rely on staff's recommendations, we really need to look at that list and figure out, you know, what's the council approved 10, 12, 15 years ago? Is that still something that we want to pursue? Or we're in a new stage, and now we need to really focus, as many Councilmember Grindal's suggesting, what are those projects that we know we can deliver, we have the money to deliver them, and we can deliver them on time versus this wish list that is so long that you just get lost in the minutia? So I think next spring, I think we'll have, certainly an opportunity to have that conversation further.
Great. I have another question. Is the four- to five-year timeframe partially due to a Star Trek sort of idea that you have, the engineer always says it takes twice as long to fix something than it actually does? So then he gets to be the hero later? Is that part of the thinking?
The four to five-year represent what I consider to be a reasonably conservative estimate based on the amount of knowledge we have at this time.
Thank you.
And again, we will keep tabs with Alameda County Fire District on their other three projects, and again, and not repeat any issues that they're having on those other projects. And again, and we can certainly provide an update when we bring the five-year CIP to City Council if we can shorten that timeframe. But we clearly understand that, and we clearly believe that we have a need to try to expedite these two particular projects.
I have one sort of detailed design question. If you don't have the answer, we can get it some other time.
Let's go.
Is the training tower at the fire station going to be retained, or is that going to be demolished as part of the new project?
To be determined.
Okay.
I haven't heard strong feelings one way or another, and one of the preliminary ideas we've been thinking about it, staff, is whether or not we demolish it and build a new station at that location to save money and time while they're in their existing facility. But that, those details still need to be worked out.
And I do know that fire personnel are in the audience, we were, a number of us were at the ribbon cutting or the groundbreaking for the new fire station training center out in the, that city in Dublin. So I would imagine a lot of the training that firefighters will be experiencing will be, I would imagine, done at the training center in Dublin that's going to be built.
Right. And there is sufficient room at this particular location to have a new training facility on the backside of this, this building. One thing I didn't cover is that the proposed funding source of this is excess revenue from Measure GG. So those were the new projects, park projects and facilities projects. Now we're going to cover those projects that we didn't have a quorum to vote, or councils didn't have a quorum to vote on last, last year. So these are previously approved projects that staff is recommending to be reinstated into the CIP. We do have five projects. I have four listed because the fifth one is going to be part of the second presentation this evening. So the Old Town Priority Development Area Streetscape Improvements, the design, as well as the construction, Railroad Quiet Zone Implementation, those are to install safety improvements at eight railroad crossings and work with various state and federal agencies to designate those as quiet zones, so that trains don't have to blow their horns when they go to those crossings. And of course, our Thornton Avenue Pavement Overlay Phase Two from Ash to Spruce. This is a pavement grind and overlay, new striping project. Many of these, these projects are currently in, in design, but they, we're asking that these projects be reinstated into the CIP.
Kind of have a question. So just one kind of point, I'm sure you didn't mean to overlook it, but in fact, the quiet zones create a lot more safety at rail crossings as well. So the improvements that are put in are, very much enhance the safety as well as being able to turn off, to turn on the, down the horns.
Right. The concept of quiet, it's actually a two-part. The first part is all the safety improvements that are needed before you can even get approval for it to be a quiet zone.
Right.
And the second part is the process and the paperwork to get it designated as a quiet zone.
Exactly.
And that's the part that takes a long time.
Yeah, I just want to say that we're getting not only no horns, but a much safer crossings. So that's part of that.
That is correct.
Wanted to draw that out. The other thing is, I just want to, I just wanted to note, I'm very happy to see the Old Town Streetscape improvements, both in design and construction, being added to this, that part, that part of our, of our city hasn't, hasn't had the attention it needs for a long time. So I'm very happy to see these being, being recommended for reincorporation.
Couple of questions as well. One, the Thornton Avenue Pavement Overlay Phase Two, Ash to Spruce, any particular reason why we're not going from Spruce down to Willow?
I believe that is a huge project.
That's, I think we'll look at this pavement condition index concerning that first.
Okay, just from, from a continuity standpoint, you know, we're so close to kind of completing that Thornton Avenue roadway. I think if we have an opportunity to go just down to Willow, I think that would be a nice extension to consider. And then secondly, on the quiet zones, we, you know, we've been talking about this for years, and my only recommendation and suggestion would be, I have to believe, because parts of these railroad crossings are in industrial areas, not in areas that impact residential properties, is to look at an opportunity to, because it's always best to come out with an opportunity to be successful or check something off as having been completed. If there's an opportunity to look at railroad crossings where the impact is greatest on residential versus maybe not an impact because it's an industrial area, I would certainly request that that be looked at or considered.
Absolutely, because we know that there are some, like you mentioned, there are some crossings that near residential, more, near more residential compared to non-residential.
I do want to agree with you on that, especially the one we're looking at on this slide here. My intuition would be this is probably the one that's closest to a lot of residences. Obviously, do the analysis to make sure that, you know, whichever one we prioritize first is the one closest to the most residents, but I just wanted to.
Great. Thank you for the feedback. A couple of things I didn't mention yet. The funding source for all of these are a variety of federal, state, and local grants, street maintenance funds. And the other thing is that council and public may have noticed that there has been, or there have been, a lot of work up and down Thornton over the past year or so.
We've heard about it.
That, that work that's going on right now along Thornton, as well as some of the adjacent neighborhoods and streets, that is Alameda County Water District, we partner with them. So just like we want to make sure that we replace damaged streets, Alameda County Water District wants to make sure that they replace old and damaged pipelines. And we want to make sure we coordinate so that they do their underground work, tear up our streets before we go in and do our street work. So the goal is to have them finished in the next handful of months before we can start our construction work on Thornton.
And I've seen a lot of that work in the Lindsay Track neighborhood, and this is an issue that came up before the previous council in terms of a lot of infrastructure improvements in that Lindsay Track neighborhood. And my understanding, and certainly correct me if I'm wrong, is once they're done, we're going to come in and do a slurry seal, I think, for that entire Lindsay Track neighborhood, if I'm not mistaken. Assuming that that is the case, I still would like Mr. Benoon to revisit that community and see if we can garner support for sidewalk curb and gutter, because that's an area that we don't have good sidewalk curb and gutter. And it's an area that we've heard over the years has been an area where there's a lot of water retention and things of that nature. So I think with the new council, I'd like to revisit that community and see if we can't do some additional outreach and see if we can't garner support from the community for that additional infrastructure improvement.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead. Your colleagues, so feel free to just simply ask.
Oh, I do have a question. I'm looking at all the prices here, and you have 1,915 and 2.3, and then you have a 17.1 million. That's a, that's a nice, that's a significant jump. What exactly is, are you going to go further into detail about what's being planned?
Yes.
Because that to me seems like, yeah, okay, good. That's, that's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money. And the Old Town Priority Development Area Streetscape Improvement Project is significantly more and different than just your standard asphalt grind and overlay. So Thornton Phase One, Thornton Phase Two, most of the typical street rehab projects, we go in, we either put a slurry seal, put in new striping, or grind the asphalt and put in new asphalt with new striping. The Streetscape Improvement is quite a bit more, and this is, I believe, a good segue. So these are some renderings of the Streetscape or proposed Streetscape Improvement Projects. The design is still being worked out, so these are conceptual renderings. But on the upper left, you have a view of Thornton Avenue looking west at Sycamore. So that's before, so that's how it currently looks with multiple traffic lanes, limited sidewalk, parking on both sides, but no bike lanes. On the upper right is what is being proposed. There's supposed to be a gateway structure, an art structure, that's not, I believe that's not exactly what it looks like, but the concept is that the whole Streetscape is going to change. And this is not a street improvement project, this is an economic development improvement project. So the idea is that we're going to reduce the number of lanes from four to two, we're going to make them nice and narrow so the traffic slows down, we're going to add buffered bike lanes to make it more bike-friendly, we're going to widen the sidewalk to make it more pedestrian-friendly, we're going to add more landscaping, both trees as well as bio-retention basins, we're going to improve the striping, the crosswalk striping, make them all high-visibility crosswalks. So on the lower left, you see, again, a typical image looking east on Thornton, and the lower right is what we're proposing it to look like. So you can see the widened sidewalk, landscaping, we're going to still have bike lanes, some parking, and more of an ability for the community to have leisure activities along that public right-of-way.
In my recollection, Mickey, and/or Mr. Benoon, was that the parking along Thornton Avenue was going to go from kind of that parallel parking to more of a diagonal parking situation. Did I remember that correctly?
Right now, we're still, there are, there are certain portions of Thornton where we're going to keep the parallel parking. I'm not aware at this point if we're going to plan any diagonal parking.
Okay.
Looking at the afterimage there on Thornton Avenue, will we have space in the, you know, we got 12-foot of paralel, eight-foot of parking, to do a protected bike lane there as we've done on Cherry and Newark Boulevard?
That is the intent, to have a buffered bike lane. Okay, now we're going to roll into a sneak peek of our new five-year capital improvement So the benefits of a five-year capital improvement plan as opposed to a two-year, does provide more realistic project delivery forecasting. As I'm sure you heard, a lot of our major projects takes more than two years. It'd be nice to be able to forecast that beyond a two-year CIP. Project milestones to ensure long-term accountability and transparency, again, to ensure that council and the public are aware of our commitments are beyond a typical two-year window. Project updates for long-term grant readiness. A lot of the, these federal and state transportation grants, we get very short notice, and they do require that projects be shovel-ready. So we are anticipating call for projects next year, the following year. So we want to make sure that we are positioned in having projects ready and designed and shovel-ready in the event those call, call for projects come out. And then, of course, City Council and community alignment over a longer time period beyond the two years. Let's see, our plan is to have an introductory City Council presentation similar to this format in early 2026. Prioritization of projects in the draft five-year CIP in spring of next year, and then the first five-year CIP here at the city will become effective July 1, 2026, assuming that it gets approved. Finally, I'm going to cover some next steps. Obviously, we'll incorporate feedback from council tonight on the draft CIP amendment. Per state law, we need to make sure that the Planning Commission reviews any amendments to the CIP to make sure they're in conformance with the general plan, so that's going to go to the Planning Commission later this month or early next month. And finally, come back to City Council for formal adoption November, December-ish. Before I get into questions and feedback, I, so after preparation of this presentation, we did get late information about a potential significant contribution from District 10, State Senator.
Dr. Ayesha Wahab.
Yes. Later this, this evening, and I wanted to make sure that, that we acknowledge and thank, thank her for that significant potential funding to help pay for some of these high-priority projects. So this pretty much concludes my first presentation. We welcome any additional feedback or questions.
I just have a quick question. I was, do we have, so right behind us, we have the former library, and it's a pretty large building. Are you just, can you talk about that now, or are you going to talk about that a little bit later?
We can incorporate that as part of the five-year CIP.
Okay, it has been? Or we can, or what are you, what are you stating?
I don't, I don't have information about the library, but we can certainly include any proposed improvement for that facility, as well as other facilities citywide as part of the five-year CIP. Again, we have a long laundry list of projects.
If I could jump in on that one. The Facilities Master Plan that was approved by the council last year recommends some sort of process to take a look at three facilities that are currently vacant and unoccupied, and one of those is the old library that's across from the Civic Center. So we're having conversations at a staff level as to the best approach that we recommend to pursue, because this is a building that we need to address.
Okay, thank you.
And part of that process, Mr. Benoon, just for, again, our listening audience, could be a recommended reuse of that building, it could be because of the cost to rehabilitate that building, that demolition could be suggested. So there's a wide variety of opportunities and options that this council will be able to consider when we revisit this next year.
Correct, for all three buildings.
What are the other two buildings?
Sure. The other two buildings, one is what we call Watkins Hall. It's an old building located on Thornton Avenue, constructed probably over-
1888.
Something years ago. He said it with such confidence.
Probably correct.
And then the third building is the previous fire station, what is now known as Fire Station 28, the previous one. It's down the street from there on Thornton Avenue as well.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So when we looked at the three parks that were prioritized under this agenda item, I appreciate that, you know, the reason why those projects were prioritized was safety, you know, safety should come first there. I have a question about the cost on that. It seems like the Birch Grove Park improvements were significantly more expensive than the ones at Miraboo or Ash Street. So I'm just curious about the difference in the costs for those projects, the different parks.
I believe that is a larger park and larger playfield.
So it's just a larger existing footprint on the playground?
Yes.
So when we replace it, place kind and kind, so it's more expensive to do that.
That's correct.
All right. And then outside the scope of the CIP, so maybe not appropriate to ask here, we do have the Grand Park in the Sanctuary Village as well. Is there an update on timeline that you can provide as we're kind of talking about some of our new park projects?
Mr. Saboda, would you like to provide the update on the Grand Park?
Up on the slide, I have a picture of- Up on the slide, I have a picture of FMC Willow Project, as well as Grand Park, which is on the left side of this project. Latest conversations we've had with the developer is that per the park agreement, as well as the First Amendment to the agreement, those agreements require that transfer of the park goes from the property owner over to the developer by the end of this year, start construction middle of next year, and have the park completed by 2028. Latest information I have is that they plan to meet that, that schedule.
I appreciate that. And then, not a question, just a comment. You know, whenever staff or next puts together a CIP or council for council review, one thing I would like to see is if we can evaluate what like a pilot phase or a Phase 0.1 would look like on the Cedar Lanier Park. When we did the Parks Master Plan, we had kind of what it could look like in the future. But I would kind of like to see is like a middle step or a first step of, what's the minimum that we can do where we can call it a park, invite our community to be comfortable with, you know, people walking through there. So that's something, obviously not for this evening, but the next time that we do look at the CIP, that I would like to see that kind of, that analysis done.
Understood.
You know, we can start taking a look at that.
Yes. Hi, thank you so much for your presentation. I did have some questions regarding restricted funds, for example, regarding the gas tax. I believe that when you were discussing the gas tax, you were explaining that often that's how we're going to repair our streets. So my question would be, due to the increase in the EVs or electronic vehicles, if we do see a pattern of decrease in the, in the gas tax, then have we identified ways to supplement what we usually would see regarding that tax?
Yes. So in addition to gas tax, we also get a half percent sales tax revenue for Measure BB. And we do get ongoing revenue from that source to help pay for street maintenance projects. And there are other, there are other funding sources. There's vehicle reg fee that we get from the county, and of course, federal, state, and local grants that we go after for big, big projects.
Great, thank you. I did have one additional question in the future. So in the future, as we are presenting with the future CIPs, is there a way to perhaps also do pie charts of the percentages that we expect to have done per, per year? Because I, it's my understanding that it's obvious that we can't say that the exact same amount would be completed per year in each project, but that way we could anticipate how much funding is going to what.
We can include it. And as part of the, the budget in the five-year CIP, we'll be certainly looking at and presenting fund balances, available funding for these various projects.
Great, thank you.
And just to follow up on that question, because I absolutely agree. It's important for the council and the community to see that these projects that we've identified as priorities, that we're, we're building them on time. And so as I would request on the five-year CIP, that as part of that process, we include what is the anticipated beginning date of the project, what's the anticipated completion date, just so that folks can see, you know, kind of what that window looks like. And of course, as we do, I would imagine it's going to be a yearly update, Mr. Benun, on the CIP. You know, that would be then the time for staff then to come in and advise council that we're either moving faster on this project or a little slower on this project. So council can then make, you know, you can make those modifications moving forward. But I think it's important for folks to see, here's the funding source that's going to go with that project, and here's, here's the timeline for the anticipated completion of that project. So I would agree with that.
Absolutely. And we have already started putting on our website some of the bigger projects with a schedule, funding sources, and we plan to regularly update that as projects progress.
Great.
I have a follow-on question to Councilmember Jorgens' question. Are the existing bathrooms at Birch Grove Park included as, as part of that project? Is that why, is that part of the reason it's more expensive?
I believe that is not part of the cost. Bathroom upgrades and replacements are identified in the Parks Master Plan, but our focus has really been on the playfield replacement, or playground replacement.
Thank you.
For this current fiscal year.
I understand. We'll talk about it in the five-year plan.
Other questions? I know we have a couple more parts to this project, process, but I'm going to open up to the community to see if there's any questions from the public regarding information that you've heard thus far. Great. Mr. Benun, should we move on then to item number two?
Yes. Yes, that would be appropriate, Your Honor. At this point, the council member should probably identify the conflict of interest.
So let me just read to the audience what the number two is. This is the overview of the Thornton Avenue Overlay Phase One, Interstate 880 to Olive Street, project for proposed amendment to the 2024-2026 biannual budget and capital improvement plan. And my understanding is, Councilmember Jorgens, you need to recuse yourself.
Yes, I will be recusing myself because I have a real property leasehold interest within proximity of the Thornton Avenue, and that is my residence.
I do want to thank the city attorney for his description on the recusal process and why that's important. But as always, I'm going to take an opportunity to give a little bit of an editorial comment. I am not a big believer on recusal on projects that involve our citywide community. And I understand the, the concern about possible conflicts of interest, certainly when it comes to financial benefit, things of that nature. I personally don't see those in these particular cases, because again, these are, these are parks, they're, they're street improvements. These are things that benefit the entire community. But I, but I recognize the importance of, you know, we need to vote our conscience and participate as a result of our conscience. But I have asked the city attorney, even though in a general sense, to maybe contact the PPC folks and see if there's some latitude in this area. We may not get the answer we want, because it's not a specific issue to which we'd be raising, but I'd be interested in their overall opinion as it relates to citywide-type projects like this. So just my comment on recusals. Mr. Benun.
All right, Mr. Subota.
Great. This is the second workshop presentation. Good evening, mayor and council members, staff and public. Similar to the first item, there, this is a workshop setting. There's no formal action. But again, we also welcome council feedback. I promise that this presentation will be significantly shorter than the first. So without further ado, the Thornton Avenue Pavement Overlay Phase One project. So the previous presentation, you heard me mention about, or council last year, sometimes we couldn't have a quorum because of two absences and recusals. And I mentioned that there are a handful of projects that we were asking to reinstate, minus one project. This is the minus one project. This is Thornton Avenue Pavement Overlay Phase One. It's about a mile-long segment from I-80 down to Olive Street. It's very similar to the Thornton Pavement Phase Two project that I mentioned earlier. This evening, it includes grind and overlay of the asphalt, installing new striping. The ballpark cost is $4.07 million. And we have various funding sources, Regional Measure Three, among others, to help pay for this. Next step for this is similar to the first presentation. We plan to incorporate this with all the other projects, go back to Planning Commission for general plan conformance, and come back to city council, November, December, for formal approval and adoption. So that actually concludes my presentation. I welcome questions or feedback.
Questions? My only comment is that when most cities put out surveys to their community regarding what are some of the issues that you're concerned about, the, always the number one item is public safety, always number one. We were so lucky in our last survey that the number one item that came forth from our community was the conditions of our roads. I don't know if any other community would say, you know, we'd love to have that be our number one concern, is the roads. What's the lifespan, once we complete this entire overlay? Just so our public knows that this is a significant investment, what would be the lifespan of that overlay before the city would, city would have to consider additional work down the road? Do you have any idea on that?
It, it depends on the level of traffic. We are exploring an idea of amending or adjusting the traffic route around this community. So if we can, if we're successful in eliminating heavy truck traffic on this particular section of road, then the lifespan can be on the order of decades, several decades.
Excellent. So if there's no other questions or comments, I need a motion to approve?
No motion, Your Honor.
I'm sorry.
This is a work session.
No motions necessary.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm so excited. Let's start. All right, thank you. Mr. Jorgens, they decided to reroute Thornton Avenue through your development, and it's going to be a lot closer to your unit than you anticipated. Should hopefully get to work faster. Thank you. The next item is the overview, item three, overview of the community park, all abilities play area project for proposed amendment to the 2024-2026 biannual budget and capital improvement plan. And my understanding is that Vice Mayor Little needs to recuse herself.
So I do have to recuse myself because I am near the real estate property interest, and I'm involved there. So I'm going to have to head out, just like you. So, thank you.
I'll try to preserve your property.
Preserve it.
And I apologize, Mr. Benun. I didn't ask for public comment on the first item on the Thornton Avenue overlay. Was there any public comment on that item? Okay, thank you very much. Please, Mr. Benun.
Mr. Subota.
Great. So this is the third and final presentation. Again, you recall during the first presentation and second presentation, I talked about issues back in June, or June, when we adopted the current CIP. And I talked about reinstated projects, and I talked about new projects. And you recall that I talked about four new park projects, and there are only three in the first presentation. So this is the fourth project, which is an all-abilities play area at Newark Community Park. I do want to remind council that this is, again, a workshop session, no formal action, but we welcome council comments. So this is a new project to replace a totlot and children's playgrounds with an all-abilities play area. This is a direct result of the significant feedback and community input that we got in terms of the future needs of, of the community. Unlike a typical playground, or playground equipment, an all-abilities play area is specifically to design and include better access and more sensory-rich playfields or equipment to deal, to, to address children of all ages, of all cognitive abilities, all sensory abilities, and of all ages. So that's what's special about this particular, particular project. The proposed project is approximately $2.6 million. The proposal is to utilize park impact fees. If you account for the three previous projects, as well as this project, we still have an estimated fund balance of $3.5 million in park impact fees. I did want to mention that the reason that the Newark Community Park was selected for the all-abilities play area was because of the existing programming and the existing space and the existence of future potential expansion of this particular type of park. So that concludes my third and final presentation. I welcome feedback.
I have a question. The, the, in the playground improvement, is there any work being done or contemplated on the, on the ancient splash pad that, that was located there? I think you can call it ancient when it's like more than 30 years defunct. So is there, is that included? Is that being addressed? Or is this just going to be a, 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 a black, a black mark in the, in the brand-new park?
I am not aware that the, you want to take this one? So the master plan doesn't include any actions right now. So right now, it's left whole, but we can look at that at the five-year CIP on what to do with it. And we want to do a little more research as to if it's still functioning or not, and what we can do with it.
Great. I, I'd like to, I'd like to see something being done one, one way or the other. If, if it can't be a splash pad, it can be some, some other, some other recreational amenity for our community.
Yes, noted.
And your five-year plan, I got it.
Yes.
The serpent. The serpent stays or the serpent goes?
Is that what it is? It's in a serpent?
Caterpillar.
Caterpillar?
Caterpillar. Who wants to take this one?
Okay. Good evening, Your Honor and council members. My name is Nick Cuevas, Recreation and Community Services Director. So regarding the serpent, or the worm, yes, it has been there for a while. We did look back on, there's actually a community member that hosts a Newark Memories history page. And so it was actually a picture from 1966 when it was installed. So that's something that we can look into potentially through public art and the Public Art Committee, if they're interested in keeping it. As you know, it is very large, and it's a big concrete structure. So maybe looking at the whole thing, or a portion of it, or some other way to memorialize that piece.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to do our best, Mr. Benun, to try to preserve all or portion of it, because again, it's part of our history. And, you know, a lot of families that bring their grandkids back to the park, you know, they, they say, you know, I used to play on that. And, and it's just, again, part of our history. And so I'd certainly encourage us to try to preserve that as best we can. Mr. Jorgens?
I'd encourage that as well, I think. If, any, to any degree, it can be preserved. But as we're preserving it, we should also figure out what animal it is, whether it's a caterpillar, or a worm, or a snake, or make sure that that's reflected in its history.
You know, other councils would love to have these conversations.
I, I would just like to chime in and, and third that.
So that, that's, that's, that's three. Beautiful. We, we need to be where we need to be. And I think it's important, the all-abilities play area. We have many members of our community that have children, for a variety of reasons, that struggle. And there's no reason they shouldn't be able to enjoy these park amenities as our kids have. So I applaud, Mr. Benun, you and staff for, for looking at this as an opportunity to be inclusive for all of our kids to play and participate. So thank you for that. Any public comments on this item? Seeing none? Any further questions or comments?
I did just have a comment that I too wanted to echo the mayor's remarks regarding how it's an all-inclusive, for all-ability children. Especially being a teacher, I do notice in the classroom, we do have a variety of individuals who do have different abilities and disabilities. And so I think it's an awesome idea to have a park that's inclusive for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it, isn't it, Mr. Benun?
Yes, that's correct, Your Honor. Staff's taken copious notes. We will incorporate the council's comments back into a draft plan that we will give to the Planning Commission for conformance with the city's general plan, and then bring back a final draft with the council for consideration, potentially as early as November, or in the alternative, December. And I, as a lifelong Newark resident, I echo the council's comments and nostalgia relating to the caterpillar, and it is a caterpillar.
And my last comment before we adjourn is outstanding presentation, Mickey. Your first presentation, you've been here how long?
Three months.
Three months. Outstanding, thorough, and very welcoming in terms of your presentation. So outstanding work, Mr. Benun, by city staff. So with that being said, we are adjourned until 7:00.